Folks, would you please stand and join me in the budget of the United States of America? And to the Republican Party, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the October eighth meeting of the Town of Canada, Dago Planning Board. Thanks for coming out. Or tuning in. There's some new people I haven't introduced them, folks at the dais in a while. Let me see if I still remember who everybody is. Karine Hatch is our recording secretary. Kim Burker is our remote facilities coordinator. Active tonight is our alternative member, but sitting in for Mark Tollworth is Tim Schneider. Mark is away, so he's excused. Got Scott Neal playing board member, Amanda Van Leekan, playing board member. Bobble Course, playing board member, Chuck Euler, playing board chairman. Sarah Reynolds, who is our town planner, Kristen Hadner, our attorney, and Eric. I want to make sure you know. Eric Cooper, who represents MRBR engineers. Okay, we have a fairly manageable agenda tonight, so it shouldn't take too long to get through this. When it comes, we'll follow the agenda as published. When it comes to your portion of the agenda, do you have something to address the planning board? On which please come to the podium, give us your name and address. Give us your comments, questions, whatever, if it's someone not related to the applicant, if it's the applicant himself, he or she said herself. Please give us a presentation as to what you intend to do with your application. The board will then deliberate and hopefully have reason to take action this evening. I want to point out our two emergency exits to the right and left. We need to leave the room. Please go to those exits. Anything else to do, this has to do with housekeeping, I guess not. First thing is the privilege of floor on our agenda. If anyone here is representing someone who wants to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, please do so now. If not, we will move on with the agenda. Anyone, privilege of the floor? If not, we will move on to our first agenda item. By the way, I should mention, we had no required legal posting with legal notices with the Daily Messenger because we have a continued public hearing and no other public hearings on the agenda, so there's no legal notice required. So the first item on the agenda is a continuation of public hearing regarding CPM 2024-091. Michelle Clark, representing Yvonne Whitmore Children LLC. And that's a property of 3407 Westlake Boulevard. Is a special use permit request to expand the occupancy of the short-term rental from 12 to 18 occupants. We did discuss this at our last meeting. We've given the applicant some homework to go to do, and I think for the most part he has responded, they have responded. So Jeff, do you want to come up and address the board as to what you supply?
We have Rick Whitmore on the line here. He didn't want to speak. He was the one who made the submission, so I prefer to Rick.
Rick, had anything to add to what we had talked about last month?
Yeah, good evening to everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
Okay, great. Yes, my name is Richard Whitmore, Rick Whitmore. I am one of the six owners of this property. My sister, Jeff's wife sitting there, Michelle is also an owner. I believe, like you said, we've been through this. We did complete all six or seven items that were requested at the last meeting, including getting probably perhaps foremost, I don't know, but foremost perhaps that the code enforcement inspector did come out and and issue a certificate that was favorable as well as some additional updates on our statement of operations and our parking layout to just restrict the parking to the six slots we have by the home and exclude the five overflow spot spots that are part of the neighborhood. So I think everything has been provided. Any, any questions from the board?
Thank you for providing that information. Yes, we did get the certification from the code enforcement officer. We also got a copy of the Finger Lakes Premier Property brochure that you use for the property. And I assume that will have to be, if you're successful in getting the additional occupancy, you'll have to amend that to some degree. You did confirm that there is no HOA or no common maintenance or involved with the Westlake Boulevard itself. So I guess in theory or practicality, the five spaces up top are worth the common good, I guess, for anyone to use as they see fit. So I'm glad we're not including those spaces as part of your, your count. We're limiting it to the six spaces down on the property itself. So that's
That's right. The only comment I would make, sir, is, you know, we do have those overflow that are community. They are right above our homes, so it's kind of natural that they could be used. We don't generally need them. We have plenty down below by the house, as you probably heard in the prior meeting. I know some neighbors were a little concerned about parking congestion. And I only mentioned the five above because, you know, it's available to not only us, but all the neighbors for any kind of activity, be it rental or otherwise in the neighborhood, to manage parking. So I think that's well addressed. And we really haven't had a single complaint in the four years we've rented this property related to parking, noise, anything. So I think Finger Lakes Premier Properties is managing this property very strictly per the documents we provided, quiet hours, parking limitations on occupancy per the permit we have, which is 12 today, et cetera. So I assume you folks are probably familiar with Finger Lakes Premier Properties. They've been around for a long time. They're very, very good and very strict in managing to the use and rental agreement policies that they present to every renter.
Okay, board, do you have questions regarding what was submitted or anything else you may have regarding this application?
I have none more. He answered my question.
So who owns the road if it's not an HOA?
The road, the road is owned by, and it's a bit of a long story, but the short answer is that the road and the common areas to the sides of both sides of the road are owned by all the homeowners on the Boulevard. And so that was granted via a court order about 15 years ago. So we do all jointly own the road and those parking spots, et cetera. We just haven't chosen to formalize the HOA into a, you know, a separate tax ID, separate state identity, but it is owned jointly by all the homeowners along the Boulevard.
An entity called WLB Group, Herschel Trudy A, has all?
Yeah, that's, you got the right acronym. It's Westlake Boulevard Association.
So really, those five spaces, it's sort of first come, first served.
Right.
And I guess any concern would be, would be if if renters for your property wind up monopolizing those five spaces. And I think it was, it was mentioned last month and our last meeting. And I assume it was in some of the literature that was provided that you wouldn't need more than six spaces. And I guess that leads me to try to decide is, is, was it the right occupancy? For six spaces. I mean, right now, you're six spaces for 12. You're asking to go to 18. Though I think it was mentioned at the last meeting that 16 was your previous occupancy, right?
Right. 16 is our current occupancy for parking by the home and, and sleeping.
Would you have any problem with the special use permit limiting you to 16 occupants?
No, no, not at all. That's what we had been doing prior to the town permitting process, 16 had no, no issues. And now it's 12, of course, but yeah, 16 would be fine going forward.
It just makes me a little nervous, six spaces, and they are kind of I won't say jammed down, down below, but they're not laid out in any nice orderly manner that if you had 16 occupants, six spaces could be challenged at some point, especially if you have people over during the day to visit the tenants. Could happen.
Actually, that is not allowed. If you, I realize you folks probably haven't read the details of the documents we provided, but in those documents, it says the occupancy limit is not only the people staying there, it is the total, including visitors.
Yeah, I do remember that. That's correct. Yep. So 16 would be 16 and 16 max, day and night. Okay.
That's right. That's correct.
So something we should have in the permit. Yeah, he's willing to limit it to 16 total. And never, never exceed, never utilize the, twice the occupancy that's provided in the local law.
Okay. So in the first whereas paragraph, the special permit resolution says they received, you've received an application to operate an STR with a maximum overnight occupancy of 18. So I think we just add it to the conditions, make a condition number 11 saying maximum occupancy shall be 16. Then spell it out, write the number that needs thrown out.
And I think Mr. Whitmore is going as far as to say that it will be 16, no more than 16 during the day or during the sleepover. Because our local allows for twice the number of occupants. And that would be 32. So
Is it number 12 daytime visitors?
Board, if anything, contrary to what you, how you're feeling on this, jump in.
Yeah.
The ordinance allows why are we if the ordinance allows it, why are we then making a special restriction?
I have a concern about the parking. I think six, I think 16 is pushing it. 18 is really pushing it for just six spaces. And I think it'll require or probably wind up. We'll find out that the five spaces up top would be used more often if they have 18 people. Mr. Whitmore said he doesn't need 18.
I understand. I understand. And it is tight. Yeah, the whole property situation is very tight then.
Yeah, I drove in the other day. It's tight. It is a six-bedroom house, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I understood, at least what I had heard from the town staff was the parking, I don't know if this is an actual regulation, but it was like you need to have at least one parking slot per bedroom is what I understood.
Correct. Is it a six-bedroom? Because I've got the printout from Finger Lakes and it says bedrooms 1 through 5. Where is the additional? I was trying to do the math to figure out where 16 or 18 would go.
We put a pull-out couch in our family room area that has closed doors.
Well, that's not really a bedroom.
Well, it is. That's true, but it does have closed doors with the castle right outside the door. So we kind of made it into a bedroom. Yes, so there was I mean, five plus, plus one.
Okay, and you have six parking spaces.
Okay.
Chuck, do you want to? It seems like it might become an enforcement issue. If anybody stops, if they've got a, if they're, if they're overnighting at capacity at 16, and anybody stops by, they're in violation. You want to give a little, say 18. Both daytime guests, 16 overnight. 18 total during the day.
Well, their own, their own regulations have no more than 16. And it was pretty hard for them. They would pay a fine, they didn't.
Seems like it's, they had called in, I saw 18 people there. All right, now we're
It'd also be violating, you know, if they see. It doesn't have anything to do with us, but I think
It doesn't. I mean
Code says that you can have visitors, right?
Up to twice, double your during, during the day, you can have twice your overnight occupancy. In this, but that's why we instituted a special use permit process for larger short-term rentals is because that'll be 36, or that could be 36 people. And that's a ton of people. This property can't really support 36 people unless they all come in by party bus. Because there's just not parking, or maybe there is for those five guest spots, but see my point.
Yeah, I just, I don't know whether we want to get in the business of regular if they've already have written self-imposed regulations on how many people.
Yeah, so, so well, they have, yeah, they have a self-imposed regulation. That's true.
Okay, so does the town need to get into that regulation?
Or into it?
What if that self-imposed is removed down the line and it's it still doesn't change our concern for the parking options and the flow process on the Boulevard? Is it just a secure, this second layer of cushion there?
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that it is. I think on all of these, I mean, the code says you can have 12 without a special use permit. If you're going to go over 12, you need a special use permit or an added level of review and the ability to impose conditions. So in the special use permit, I would think it would be advisable for you to set the maximum overnight and the maximum daytime guests for, in all special use. That's the whole point of it coming to you. Otherwise, we could, you know, it could be administrative, just like 12 and under.
You know, and considering that there's some concern from the neighbors and they're willing to, to limit.
Okay, 16 and 16.
Okay. Yeah, it conforms to what Finger Lakes has in their brochure. It conforms to what the applicant is asking for. So I think all we're doing is endorsing what those other two documents have. All right, anybody in the audience?
There shouldn't be any with, with, with all of those measures in place. There shouldn't really be a need for those other parking spaces, so.
Well
Yeah, let's change, let's change that.
Anybody who's ever been to the lake, any lake, people are going to see if they're going to use those if there's daytime guests, I would think. Some people, just because it's a payment, they can get into the driveway.
But they're playing combatives for home parking that they would
Yeah, I would think so.
Sarah, do you have a comment?
Just a, just something to maybe ask. So for all applications for short-term rental comments for what, for which the maximum occupancy for overnight would be 12, they won't ever come to the planning board unless we change our law, right? And those people can all have 24 people during the day.
Regardless of their margins situation?
Parking is dictated by number of bedrooms, not people. So if it's about four bedrooms, we require at least four parking spaces. If that's room six spaces. Based on our
So the code doesn't address the guest part?
Daytime guest parking? No. No.
Which could be problematic.
But we don't address it. Not in the current law.
But they don't address it at any of your houses either. And if you throw a party with 24 people, a bunch of people are going to park in the street. And that's legal during most times of the year, during six, seven months out of the year, you're allowed to park on the street. Unless otherwise, if there's no parking zone, people are going to park on the street, down the road and have to walk. If somebody's having 24 people over during the day, every single day of the summer, then I think it becomes an issue for code enforcement to deal with in terms of the other regulations imposed in our short-term rental code, including not creating a nuisance, not being a problem.
Events.
Yeah, well, and events. That's the, that's the other, really good point. That's the other check on 24 people being there is that you're not allowed to have that, so.
Okay, Ken, I'm going to go out to anyone here or out TV land, if they'd like to address the board regarding this application. No, I think we're ready to move on. Okay, so this is a type two seeker. And there, sure, do we need to go through the code like we did last time? Did you do it for this one? I don't know. We, I'm not sure if we did, but he, they have a written document that looks like it answered every single question on it.
Yeah, I want to make sure.
Okay. I put that in minutes that they, the planning board acknowledged the written documents that addressed the special use permit criteria. And they're satisfied that the items contained therein cover.
Just to be consistent.
I don't think you're getting out of going through each thing every time.
Well, that's something we talked about here. So there's no site plan with this. Scripted, submitted, so we're strictly looking at a special use permit for the operation of the short-term rental. So can I get a motion on the seeker type two?
I'm going to make the motion to accept the seeker type two. Excuse me, for CPM 24-091, 3407 Westlake Boulevard.
Okay, or a second? Motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to the special.
I make a motion to accept special use permit for CPM 24-091, 3407 Westlake Boulevard.
Wait, with the 10 conditions written, that's the one about maximum occupancies being 16?
The maximum occupancy shall be no more than 16.
I'll cycle that with the 11 conditions.
Yeah, we call it something, isn't it? All right, is that the only additional condition?
Unless you have others.
Unless I have others? No signage? I was just thinking about the Finger Lakes Premier Properties hangs a sign up usually sometime in front.
We started that discussion in the office.
Okay, let's know sometime when you figure it out.
They have one there. Finger Lakes, like Yeah, and the
Yes. Yes, and, and, and the address is, they clearly just wanted a better address.
Okay, I have a motion from
The second with 11 conditions.
We got a motion and second for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Mr. Whitmore.
Thank you.
Good night. All right, let's move right along. We got CPM 2024-105 on Sisery. Represented by Scott Harder to amend the approved site plan. There's site plan 24-052. And there are some changes made to the house, the driveway and the septic systems.
Yes, that is correct. Hi.
Harder time. Hi, Scott.
I'm Scott Harder, representing Mount Sisery. We are here for amended site plans approval. There were some changes made as we started construction based on the owner's overview of the placement of the house as we had staked out. And, and perhaps consideration of future use such as a pool that may not have been considered as timely as we would have liked. So as a result, the waste floor system was shifted to the southeast away from the revised house location and the orientation of the house was changed based on the orientation that the owner wanted. The driveway was shortened by about 89 feet. The finished floor was dropped about a foot and a half. The property is about 30 acres in size. There's no real impact to anything we had originally proposed, although admittedly, things are different. So we're here to seek your approval to continue the project. We've got to stop construction, but the driveway is in and contractor is preparing to install the utilities and commence where we stopped in early September.
Or any questions? I tried to find your old plan and your new plan. I can tell, I mean, I'm looking at the new plan right there. How much has it changed?
I, I did another sheet that I included
I couldn't find that one.
In, in the submittal, I don't know if you can go to the, the cloud and
Right there, yep.
Right, but there's another one that I provided that shows exactly what
It's like an overlay.
Would you, let's see.
The revised ZO comments?
Yeah, the comparison drawing. Is that, yeah. Keep going down, comparison drawing right there. Please click on that, yeah.
Oh, it's labeled as email court.
So if you zoom in a little bit. Other way. Magnify. Magnify a little more. So you can see the outline of the original house location. And you can, in light line weight. And you can see the proposed house location in dark line weight. Likewise, you can see the original Leachfield location in light line weight. And the proposed Leachfield location in dark line weight. So I produced that drawing for that particular reason. So I'm glad you were able to find it because I thought it would make things clear.
Yeah, very helpful.
And it also shows, as I mentioned, the shortening of the driveway by approximately 89.
What's your distance, Scott, between your, the next, the last pull-off to your end of your last pull-off? My question is, you need the middle?
The, the pull-off that we show there, the one that's closest to the end of the driveway, is that what you mean?
Well, there's, yeah, your rule is 250 feet. Well, there's, yeah, the, your rule is two hundred and fifty feet. I do, I'm wondering how far that is.
Each, each one of those pull-offs were, was originally set. And they are actually constructed um, at two hundred and fifty feet.
It's close to the house now, is it?
We're, we're, we're still about a hundred feet from the end of the drive and the turnaround, so. I mean, it's a lot of pullovers.
It is, and it's a long walk up there.
So I can have a big party and have parking on site.
Only for two times back.
Don't get my ideas.
Unlike your other application that you had.
There's no events at this house, right?
Not that I know of.
Anybody else?
Is the, you said that the pool is a potential?
Yes.
Okay, it's not, it's not present here, probably.
Correct, there'll be a, a, another um, project that happened in the future, however, when we did the Leachfield design originally relative to the original house location, um, it became obvious that that could interfere with future pool that would be down slope of the residence, so we made that change.
Is that a standard leach bed or did perp there?
Um, we did get percolation rates up on the hill, um, which is where this is. We originally tested for about for the potential of fourteen lots. Um. And we looked at franchise lots, and I think we appeared before you with some conceptual plans.
Yeah.
Um, the owner, however, and, and we pursued sanitary sewer options with Ontario County. Um, but, uh, we weren't able to get Ontario County to really, um, come on board, even though there is a sanitary sewer manhole right at the end of West Ridge Run. Uh, coincidentally, um. So the owner decided he wanted to proceed with the project, then we didn't have sewers, so we went with septic, but the, but the soils are okay.
All right, you don't have to do raise because you changed your location.
No, it, it is raised. It's the same system. It was raised.
Same system or raised?
Raised in both locations.
Uh.
It's largely clay soil.
The new locations behind that tree line, which are probably high in the raised bed.
Right. Correct. It's actually staked out this time.
Are you making out with DOH? Was it Kendall Larson was reviewing?
Kendall Larson, um, I've been in touch with him and he as of two days ago referred the application over to Tyler for any final comments. So I think we're very close to approving that, and, and the initial comments that Kendall provided were pretty minor.
And I think we have that in here. Some condition.
You, you allowed us to.
The original plan.
Yeah, to postpone that to the C of L.
Right.
Because of the base of which, um, these waste floor system reviews take place.
Okay, uh, you seem to be clear with Jim Fletcher. Uh, he said you, the water issues and things to take care of there. He says something about a need for a sign in Middle Cheshire Road. Is he talking about a driveway sign? I, I'm not sure what Jim.
We showed, we showed us, we showed the, uh, note relative to the sign. I think if you zero one, I think it's there. Um, just above the driveway connection, I think.
Mm-hmm. I can't, what, what does it signify?
Um. I think Jim wanted a sign indicating that the driveway was coming up because there is a pullover area there for West Ridge Run, and I think he wanted a notification sign to be, um, kind of an identifier to southbound traffic. I believe.
Oh, it's on there.
Um. Provide a.
Signs, no.
A sign installed on the west side of the highway right where indicating the new driveway connection. The Middle Cheshire Road, the exact location and sign type to be determined by the town highway superintendent.
All right, well, we have Jim being happy with what's proposed as part of the condition, so.
Okay.
I give it.
Let me see if you can look at this.
I knew it was, I knew it was on the plan somewhere.
We, we did, that was just us Thursday, I don't have minutes done for that, but, um, you just, uh, referred to our previous comments, so there was something.
Okay, landscaping native, but this, 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 okay. Just question, are you disregrading either side of the putting green?
Mm-hmm.
Is that done for what reason?
I think the owner took advantage of topsoil that was being excavated when the road was boxed out, and I think he decided to dress up some of the work that he had done with his putting green. It certainly wasn't anything that was revealed to me.
No, I, I know you said that.
However, um, uh, Mike asked that we show the areas that were affected, which we've done and outlined, and they've been stabilized and there's silt vents out there. We've spoken with the owner about not proceeding with any more of that until the project is.
Put your shovel away. Okay, uh, you, the slip in the NOI.
That's.
That's.
It's still in progress, it's still.
And we're be having any other comments on this application? I know you had it on the original. Okay. Does anyone have any further issues, discussion? Would anybody in the audience like to address the board regarding this application? If not, uh, seeker was taken care of with the original approval, so don't have to worry about that. So we're looking at a amended single-stage site plan. And, uh, someone wants to look at what's proposed and make a motion? Motion, Chris. I'll make a motion to approve an amended single-stage site plan at CPN twenty-four one oh five on Middle Cheshire Road. The lot number's not here. Uh, with the current nine conditions.
One second, then.
Okay, other motions, second, uh, Eric, the revision date, the last, last plan was ten-three. That was the one that added the, uh, expanded limits of disturbance and additional goal course. Uh, all these conditions still apply, then even like, we can tick off. Did you put the note on the plans of all along there? Should be seated and established?
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh, okay. Watership we got. Did you label the site distance?
Yes.
Driveway?
Mm-hmm, that's, that's below the note, but, but the sign.
So maybe we can. Narrow it down to seven conditions. Does that sound good to work?
Sounds good.
Okay. Um. You're saying as long as it's on the one that we've, that approved, not that shadow change as well? Yeah, the ten-three revision has.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, did we make that a motion? Motion is, okay, down both. Drifted off there. All right, further discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. Okay.
Thank you.
That one's, that one's done. Might as well not leave the podium.
I guess I have one more.
Yep. Uh, we'll move on to CPN twenty-two-four thirteen. Uh, I don't know, county read sixteen. Requesting a one-year extension of the true plan uh, before signing, and the original approval was back in October of last year. And, uh, yes, Scott, do you want to tell us why you're asking for an extension?
Um, we're asking for an extension because we have not started, um, construction yet. They aren't ready to start building yet. Uh, we were before your zoning board, I think it was in July, asking for an extension to the variance associated with this as well. Um, they've pretty much dedicated most of their um, efforts to fifty-two seventy-one, which is the adjoining property on the lake, and that was remodeled, and I think the site plan is being signed up as we speak for that. We're going to be starting the related site work in the next week or so, I believe. So they've changed their priorities and, and this one, which I think technically has an address of fifty-two seventy-two, Menards Drive, um. That's, that was put on the back burner, um. There was a lot of work put into getting the approval for that. I'm certainly well aware of that, and we just want to maintain what we've achieved, not have to redo it if possible.
Scott, was there a problem with our G and E power going through there, through that property?
The, the power lines going through the woodlot?
Yeah.
Yeah, as part of that, um, i- if you were to take a look further in our, um, maybe it's shown on that, I, I can't, I can't exactly see, but we're proposing to remove all the electric and go underground from Westlake Road and bring it around.
And our G and E, I think last discussion, I remember there was a problem with our G and E.
And I think there was a, I think there was a problem with our G and E, um. They considered doing that sooner than later, and, um, someone had not been in touch with our G and E to authorize them to proceed, and um, they required a certain amount of money to do what needed to be done, and and then fifty-two seventy-one took priority and it's been tabled, I guess.
Yeah.
But, but to answer your question, yes, the electric is proposed to come down, would be very wouldn't work very well with our design, um.
Have there, I know this was a property that had a lot of discussion.
Yes.
Have there been any natural events, uh, occurred since last year that would change your, natural weather events would have changed your thinking as to how you have that laid out with the, uh, oh, you have an easement across the front, I know, for conveyance of the water, and they run off and may jump the banks and uh, no reason to reconsider any of that or change it or?
Well, I think the, the storm that we had a year ago, July fourth, verified exactly the way the water flows across that property. It, it definitely follows the contours that we have shown. And the elevations that I show on my grading plan, if you want to scroll down for that. Uh, they put the house up significantly uh, while preserving that flow route through and across the driveway and onto the vacant parcel. So I, I wouldn't make any, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make any changes, but I I felt, um, uh, that our design had been validated that way. And you may have also noticed that we did a, um, bank stabilization project on the property across the street by the waterfall.
Mm-hmm.
Or we reinforced the bank there, and that required quite an approval from the DEC because Menards Creek is a trout stream. And, uh, we went back and forth on that with the DEC for almost a year. And we finally got the design that we thought was appropriate, and we finally got them to agree. And that held on that Fourth of July date. We, we've lost one of the, um, holders. So I, I think we have a, a good understanding of what goes through there, but as you know, with respect to hurricanes and things that were seen nationwide and such, we never have a hundred percent uh, certainty in everything we do, but I think we've have taken it into consideration and tried to do a good job.
Mm-hmm. Can you wanna scroll down to the landscape plan, just for freshmen and man that he? That's the tree, yeah, that was.
That was.
Part of the discussion.
Right. And then there was a it was recommended, and, and I believe the landscape architect put in a planting mix along that potential overflow area of a certain um, type of lawn.
All right, do you see any reason why this couldn't be resolved in the coming year? To get it signed and?
Um, I'd sure like to see it include.
All right, board, your thoughts, feelings? Okay with?
I'm okay.
Okay, good to hear. All right.
Just make sure they got it, you got an extension. The second one-year extension on your stream said that varies.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
That expires.
The applicant has a year.
July.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm nudging them.
So, yeah, you get it done before July. Cause that's building permit, right? That's not just, this is just siding and plant, right?
Right.
So that's more critical than this, but hey, we're critical. All right, do, uh, Chris, we okay to move on?
Yes.
Definitely. I have a motion to grant the extension.
I'll make that motion to grant the one-year extension for CPN twenty-two zero one eight at fifty-two seventy-two nineteen drives.
One second. Motion, second. Have you really submitted a revised plan per se, or are we still fluid with the, uh, plan that was your revised last July twenty-sixth?
That's, that's still the same. I, I.
Okay.
I haven't issued a new plan. We're, we're still going with the one that was.
Okay, there was note, in, in the interest of asking, requesting the extension, you did not amend the plan.
Correct.
All right, so it's still the twenty-sixth. Two thousand twenty-three, very good. Okay, a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Coming out. All righty, uh. Yeah, the, uh, next item is twenty-two-four oh eighty-eight, uh, regarding Uptown Landing. Uh, if you recall, we did do a, uh, review of this and, um, offered to the board for their consideration as part of the, uh, zoning change to, uh, Senate zoning, uh, that's the report, which they have, uh. Sarah, maybe you want to tell us how this is progressing as far as? These zoning.
Yeah, so, um, last month, the town board, um, set a public hearing for this project for the October twenty-eighth town board meeting, um, which kicked in order of native secret review and referrals of the county planning board. So those things are in the works right now, which is one of the reasons you're seeing it again, even though there's not any major changes. Um. County, I think, the meeting is tomorrow. So we do have their staff comments, but, uh, other sheet comments, so it's, I mean, it's going through the motions, it's going through the process, it's moving on. Um, the town board could, um, have a preliminary approval on October twenty-eighth, which would then set in the motion, the ability for them to come, supply for site plan, review of the planning board, probably something like a preliminary overall, I guess. Okay. So, you know, obviously we don't know what the town board's going to do. If they'll do that on, uh, twenty-eighth, or if they'll continue with that.
The town board did declare themselves the lead agency on the seeker.
They're.
Oh, they intend to. They declared their intent to be lead. Okay. It was a declaration of intent, okay. Um. And I guess we have an opportunity, if we feel for any reason shouldn't be town board, it should be somebody else, we can certainly respond with that. I don't see any reason to do that.
Uh, the way the seeker's been worked for this, I mean, it's, I know we've all heard it, um, planning federation trainings about, uh, illegal segmentation of secret. We are going to separate seeker, not segment them. Segmenting usually comes when you're doing one piece of land when another's about to be developed.
Sure.
Separating it is, uh, is per action. Town board is going. Town board is going to take action, actions are what seeker is subject to. Uh, and their action is granting incentives zones. Your action will be granting site plan approval. Eric and Lance Brayband and I have discussed it along with Sarah, the town manager, uh, John Felbo and. Uh, do you think it would be appropriate to do two separate seekers, two different actions, the environmental impacts of? The town board. Town board's actions are much different than the site plan. Uh, environmental index, that being said. I'm assuming that's Matt on online, I don't imagine. Any uh. Anything beyond standard seeker review, full environmental assessment forms. Uh, and part two and part three being completed by this board. I don't think, uh, after your review, Eric, you're soon recommending any further seeker review beyond what the board has proposed, correct?
Yeah, Chris, this is Matt Tomlinson from Marathon, uh, just to clarify, so would that be a consistency? Review to uh make a consistency finding on seeker, or you're talking about separate findings being issued? And the reason I ask that is because the size, we are a type one, so I would not want to. Make the project subject to another coordinated review if it is going to be separated. Cause that that would, I think, uh, fall into uh segmentation if we do two separate coordinated reviews. With different lead agencies. A- and I don't know that there's any desire to do so, ha, on the towns end, certainly not on the developers end.
That's something uh we're gonna have to think about, that might be a very good point.
Okay, so we have done uh several large projects in the city of Rochester who who handle it that way, where it's a consistency review, meaning. Further detail that is presented at the site plan, which is typical for large projects like this, where it's uh. Reviewed consistent with the findings of the lead agency that did the coordinated review, and of course, if there's any amendment. That needs to be made, it can be done so, but it's only at the. I'll call it lower board, not meaning that in a derogatory way, but the subsequent board's uh findings or review. When additional detail is provided for the project.
Can you give me a pause, Mark, to to talk about how that, how we've seen that handled? Um, and I'll coordinate with you and M R V and we'll we'll figure something out.
I would be happy to, yep, no problem. Okay, and and I'm sorry, just just for a clarification on my part, cause I I apologize, I'm not there, I have to be in Victor tonight, but um. Is this going to be a continuing planning board item until we come back for preliminary? Or is it intended that this is the last uh time on the agenda to we make formal site plan application?
Last time on the agenda until we make formal site plan application.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something, thank you.
I guess the other thing for application, uh, Marathon, the applicant did submit a. Revised. Narrative as to the amenities. Uh, to be provided and they were. Based or they had considered some of the recommendations we had put into our advisory report. So I don't know if if you didn't look at that read over. I guess it's it's in the uh, it's in the uh book file for, okay. Yeah, they 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 looked at the items that we mentioned and then. Accepted one or two and others, they said could be considered at a later date, either with. Other funding or uh. Uh, at another time. Not place, but another time, so. Look it over, I ju- just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that that document is coming. It's in the cloud, I couldn't.
Yeah, um, on September thirteenth. They uploaded and.
It looks the same as the amenities.
So let's not spend any more time on that, so that's uh. I don't think any actions are required on our part.
Do you want to, I guess, just make the decision that the agency playing for? Has no objections to the town board, assuming the agency.
Yeah, we don't. So I, we could do it by motion or by consensus? Just have it reflected in the minutes?
Consensus to do nothing would be a great way to handle this.
Okay, so uh, the consensus is we're doing nothing. All right, let's uh look at the minutes from uh back in September, the twenty-fourth, I think was the meeting date.
Just got a question.
Sure.
On a on a project of that size, is it typical of the new traffic study provided? Demonstrate that the level of service or.
Absolutely. Um, and they have done one. Um, in your cloud, you'll see an enhanced environmental assessment report, I think it's entitled.
Expanded E A F.
Expanded E A F report. Uh, which takes the categories in an environmental assessment form and sort of. Gives you a, some documentation for each of the topics you're supposed to address procedure. And for traffic, they did a full traffic report.
You good, Tim?
Yes.
All right, let's move on to the minutes from the twenty-fourth of September. Any additions, corrections? What uh, career that sent out? This is the last draft, not. Make a motion, please. Motion of second, and third discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have uh no chair lease to release. And uh. Other business uh. Sarah, I'd like to make some changes to our, propose some changes to our rules and procedure. Or any deadlines, and there was one reference to the short-term relevant, I guess, no longer applies, right?
I think I emailed everybody last week, the red line that we were asking you to take a look at, item seven A. Changing it from noon to eleven fifty-nine P M. It'd just be easier for staff. Um, I think it's a lot easier for the applicants to have the whole working day rather than half the working day, and you always get some stragglers coming in and. One to three o'clock, it seems most months, so this would. To come and talk to us, um, and then even looking and creating this red line, I noticed there's an old. Carryover um under further section. Um, the old short-term rental law. I had a reference about um specials, that it was a special use permit, and this is. Going that quite a ways before this last iteration, and so I think I'm G on the. Whatever number that is, eight. Um, I think. Since none of that applies anymore, we just remove it. It references a law that doesn't exist anymore.
Okay, that's that's continuation G.
Yeah, G has a letter one.
Okay. Word understand uh what's being asked?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, someone's in favor of changing our rules and procedure, I guess we need a motion.
I'll make that motion to update the rules of procedure based on the red line provided by Sarah.
Motion second. For discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you'll take those changes.
Yeah, and I don't remember if I told you those, but those only were approved the same change.
Okay, uh. I guess as far as progress with our tree and shrub list. Uh, I know Edith did a introduction. So I guess it's still a work in progress in terms of. I guess the anything we have to think about, and we discussed it the last minute, is how we're gonna. Treat this list, is it gonna be a guideline? I don't think we want to make a local law, of course. Uh, I think it's just a guideline that's provided to an applicant, and these are our suggested. Yeah. Trees and shrubs and landscaping items, and would you consider them, and uh. Uh, we've. We've been pretty tough on guidelines sometimes, I think we can, we can also apply that. Toughness to uh to this uh, this also, so.
Chuck, can we make sure that they get it early on in the plant planning process, like a P R C, so that they don't have to come to us and. They need to have it early.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have it on the plans before they're even seated.
Yeah.
Well, if we put the, if we post the guidelines. And they know they're there, they're there, so take a look at it.
And then the more that we.
Then we come to, yeah, the more they become familiar with them.
Right.
Certainly benefit, and they'll know, but yeah.
Yeah.
For the folks who come in. Submit an application and they haven't talked to us before this, then. We can certainly, you know, give it to them as a resource, if out permanent, like we do some other information. Um, documents. Can we put it on the website like we do with our shoreline guidelines and so.
Guidelines, yeah.
Um, we can make it available.
Yeah.
They won't notice it, you can see it, but.
Will you mention it in P R C?
Yeah.
And I. I think, you know, E C B can, it's one of the things you'll be looking at, I guess, as part of your review. Uh, you know, we have so many other things to look at in terms of playing board, but certainly, I think. Uh, you would look at the guidelines, look at the plans, and say, hey, we're we're foul, or we're good. Okay, uh, so, yeah, keep, uh, what I've seen so far is very interesting, yeah. Yeah, I liked the, I liked Edith's uh. Forward, what she wrote. Uh, it's October, folks, uh, we're getting near the end of the year as far as the training. There are a lot of sessions coming up uh. On the nineteenth of February, excuse February.
Wait a second, hold on.
Too late, you're at the end of the year. November the nineteenth, the Planning Federation has a comp plan, uh, learn at lunch session. So then on the back in October, back to tomorrow, in fact. The county has an ag training webinar from six to eight tomorrow night. All about uh farms and zoning for farms and farm stands, that kind of stuff. Uh, ten twenty-six, Planning Federation has a session on regulated controversial uses. Again, it's a learn at lunch. Session. You're something the twenty-four, oh, short-term rentals, twenty-fourth October. Yeah. So, uh, get your, get your hours in if you don't have them, that includes me. So, uh. Don't want the wrath of uh. Wrath of Khan coming down on us, beginning of January. All right, anything else uh the board has? Anything else staff has? So our next meeting is the twenty-second, I think the agenda is already been put out. I'll say you have a heads up as to what's coming. And that's all being said, I'm done.
I have one question.
Sure.
I'm sorry, um, we almost made it less than an hour, um. If we. Have any. Um, short-term rentals, there's a short-term rental on Smith that's listed on Airbnb for thirteen people. And uh, there's been. Some overnight guests, there's been a lot of parking there, should I notify you, send an over email or other folks of like? Hey, I see this, I don't know if I can worms here, but.
If you notify me, we will prompt you to fill out.
Okay.
But I think it'd be a great idea to at least. Make you aware of it.
Yeah.
Well.
But tracking it becomes hard without the complete.
Okay.
I was gonna say, isn't that a cloud thing?
Yes, we also, well, and it's not, we actually today it went live, but we do have um. Our host compliance software, which is the software that's tracking all of our short-term rentals.
Oh, wait, it just went live today.
Today.
Oh, never mind.
Well, we.
Like a test.
I wanted to test. I was thinking you were already live. Man, the complaints is a, is a forty-five dollar five.
Excuse me, what?
We now have a twenty-four hour complaint hotline system, it will be answered by the really. Even like phone call, you can submit it.
Is that a formal complaint that would go against their record?
Yeah, but it should be, it helps us track it, so it's not just the email.
I had a conversation with a gentleman that said, I complained about something and it never got.
Oh, no.
Because you issue a complaint, it doesn't mean. That the town will bring them some action. So I mean, it's.
I'm not. I'm just opening the conversation.
Older versions of the short-term rental law had things like two-strike, two two complaints in your vehicle. Which, you know, you get a. Problematic neighbor, they all have to do is submit two complaints, and you're losing your.
I mean, code enforcement checks it out.
So that's code enforcement checks it out, it uses their judgment. The same judgment they use in all the complaints, building zone zoning code. You know, it's the the judgment. For how it operates.
And oh, and complaints can also be used for the past time, but we have a new one, so.
Okay.
We're gonna figure out how to use it, we're gonna get the word out, but yeah, it's got an online form. You can actually fill out, or you can phone call if you don't want to use the form.
Okay.
It's pretty nice, it gives you to choose separate pictures if they want to and stuff like that.
I can.
All for a short-term rental, but we haven't publicized it yet, because we just got the confirmation from the company today that.
Okay.
It's been on, we've been testing it for a while.
Cool. Okay. Okay, that would commit complaint to you. Got it, okay.
Where is it, is it online right now? Sarah?
The new, no, we don't have a link to it.
If you want me to.
It was literally an email that came to us.
The tester, I.
You got a few to put in?
Tester.
No, but I, my neighbor. Or neighbors. Neighbors, they're complaining against you.
No.
Don't tell them, don't tell them where it is.
Chuck, I got two real quick, they, one, the code enforcement officer. Um, asked to, it's give give more time when you're asking for inspections. Like Kevin Latt, they got it done, but he said it's really disgusting, he told Chuck that, but I just thought it was important to know. Why Chuck is saying, oh, that's adjourned it.
Well, I, I think the word to address that is P R C.
Yeah, yes, but if there's something that, if it comes up at our meeting, a planning board meeting, it's just asking. Not to do it to the meeting two weeks later, do it to.
Do it the next month.
Uh, but yes, your suggestion that we initiate the request for uh code enforcement.
Well, it was because of the code, when we were reading code that night. We got to that point in code and we didn't have anything validated.
It was the first of these that came through staff, P R C, and this board, so.
Either way, we will keep that in mind.
Yeah, and then the other thing I thought might be useful. For short-term rentals especially, but in general. Um, special use permits, they all require a statement of operations, I've never seen any that are remotely similar or that. Ever get everything you need to know on the first shot, so maybe a list if you wanted to email it to staff. So they could, you know, I like to see the following things for my, my statement of operation. And they can give, give um applicants more guidance.
If they have some place and. The code spells out.
It's simply, I don't know, it's operation, I think that's all.
Code spell out.
Kind of, but. If there's stuff you wanna see, let's just list it out, even if it's already in the code. Um, cause I think applicants struggle with that, what do you want me to write? Uh. You know, what's this, I rented. Uh, so the more guidance we can give them, the more of what you wanna see, you can get, I agree, it's in the code. But it's not that comprehensive as to what, I think you guys generally. So if you think of stuff you wanna see, let staff know so they can start telling you what it's that.
You can.
That's all.
I, I think that advertising brochure, the brochure of the finger lakes broccoli uses, that. That's almost the state of operations in terms of. Every, every issue that could, you know, trash, uh. I'm keeping, keeping things quiet, uh, hours, quiet hours and all that. So that's uh, anything listed in that type of document would. Hardly good to see in the state of operations or supply that done.
Yeah, and that's, we've done two when we've had one of them.
Hmm. All right, perfect, anybody else?
Motion to adjourn at seven eleven.
I will accept that motion.
Aye.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.